Good evening. It's Monday, June 12th, 2023, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. We have several meetings tonight. We have a Licensing Board meeting, a Board of Public Works meeting, and a Finance Committee meeting. More than 24 hours in advance of all of these meetings, the notices of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meetings was posted in accordance with Wisconsin State statute. I'll ask our clerk to confirm that these meetings were properly posted.
I confirm.
Thank you. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all of our council members present with us tonight. Mark Allen is present with us on virtual meeting here with us tonight, so we do recognize the quorum of our council. Our first item of business is approval of our Common Council regular meeting minutes from May 15th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Model. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Zingshime. Any comments, questions, corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Motion carries. We're going to start with an oath of office for firefighter/paramedic Brandon Mum. It's all my chief to come forward to do that.
Can I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Brandon Mum.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter/paramedic.
As firefighter/paramedic.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Brandon is going to be pinned by his wife Pam tonight. Brandon comes from Ripon, and there he was a firefighter. He also served at North Fond du Lac and Menominee Falls. He started with West Bend on the 30th of May. He went on shift on the 8th, and he is on the red shifts. So, you want to introduce the rest of your family here?
This is my wife Pam, my daughter Alison, son Charlie, my parents Debbie and Dennis.
So, we'd like you to know that you now have the badge on your chest, and with that badge comes a family. You can look out here and see the rest of the firefighters. They either have the patch or the badge on their chest, and you're now with the West Bend family. So, welcome to the family.
Welcome to West Bend.
Grab the mayor.
Congratulations. Let's look more. Do it again. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brandon. Welcome to West Bend.
Congratulations, Brandon. Welcome aboard. We now have a resolution honoring 25 years of service to the City of West Bend for Jim Ranky, and I will take a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Berquist, and we'll give that one to Model. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, then we'll vote on it when it's done. And in the meantime, where's Jim? Jim, why don't you come stand up here at the podium? Whereas Jim Ranky began his career with the City of West Bend on June 1st, 1998 as a planning technician in the Department of Community Development, and whereas Jim attended Marine Park Technical College and earned an associate's degree in civil engineering structural technology, and whereas Jim advanced to the Assistant Planner, Planner, and Business and Development Planner position, and whereas over the last 25 years, Jim has gained incredible knowledge of the planning and municipal code for the City of West Bend, and has attended approximately 250 plan commission meetings for over 1,400 residential, commercial, and industrial developments. And whereas Jim is a dedicated employee of the Department of Community Development and has furthered his service as a City of West Bend community officer from 1998 to 2009 and from 2016 to current time. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Jim Ranky and expresses its deepest appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. With that, I will ask to vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, passed and approved this 12th day of June 2023. So, Jim, thank you very much for your service to West Bend. If you'd like to say a few words, you can have at it there. I'm going to come get this to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the council, and it's been a quick 25 years, and hopefully more to come, and I've learned a lot and plan to learn a lot more as the years go on. Thank you.
Does he get a coffee mug or something?
He does.
Watch. That's retirement.
Oh, okay.
Pen? Not yet. Too soon.
There were several people in the office who wanted to roast Jim tonight, but we didn't allow that to happen. So, we're going to adjourn our Common Council meeting. At the moment, we'll re-adjourn here in a minute after Licensing Board, Public Works, and the Finance Committee meeting. So, with that, I will call to order the Licensing Board. It's June 12th, 2023. We have 11 items, 10 items, on our agenda for tonight. The first being a new license, which is an original Class A combination license for the La Cabana Grocery Store, and then we have several renewals for the 2023, 2024 years. Chief, I'd ask you to come up and just kind of give us some background on these renewals and the process.
Sure. Similar to the last time we presented on renewals, this is our annual ongoing process. Lieutenant Brian McAndrews, our administrative aide, works very closely with the clerk's office, reviews past year's history for our license holders, criminal checks, all those. We have no problem coming before you when there are issues in this current packet group that you see before you. There are no issues. The police department recommends approval on all.
Great. Thank you. We'll take the first item, the class, the original Class A combination license for La Cabana Grocery Store. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Butch Look and Zingshime. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next group will take as a group, if that's okay with everybody?
That's fine.
Okay. So, I'll look for a motion to approve items two through 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butch Look and Zingshime. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With no further business before the Licensing Board, I'll adjourn by the call of the chair.
All right. I would like to call to order it. City of West Bend Board of Public Works, we have two items on the agenda. Item number one, for the approval of minutes for May 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right. Model and Alderman Allen. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award C23-04 Sidewalk New and Repair at Various Locations. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to ask for award of our annual sidewalk contract. We bid the project to repair and replace, install new sidewalk at various locations throughout the City of West Bend. As we've done in the past several years, we split the contract in different sections. That's, we started doing this because at some point concrete prices were jumping up and down, and instead of not awarding the bid because the bid, not awarding the contract because the bids came higher, we split the contract in sections, which in case of price hike that we did not expect, then we can still do some sidewalk work every year instead of canceling the entire contract. This year, we had seven areas that are listed in the memo. We received two bids for the contract, and the bid totals are listed as well in the memo. Forward contractors is the apparent low bidder. However, as we discussed in past meetings of Board of Public Works and Common Council, we have had concerns with this contractor with work that they've done here in the City of West Bend, and it's been a couple of years, and so we checked their references again to see if they had taken actions to correct those issues, and our review when calling other communities was a mix of half or more that were on the fence with them, not really, would not really recommend them. The other half said that they did okay, nothing exceptional, but they were okay. But based on, based on those references and based on the history that we have, we would recommend going with the next bidder, which is Primaries Electric. This is a company that's doing this year our water utility pavement repairs, calling other communities about them, or even while calling communities about forward contractors, we received very, very positive feedback from the community, those communities for this contractor. Therefore, we recommend that the contract be awarded to them in the amount listed in their bid, and a contingency fund of about 5.4% for total allocation not to exceed $195,000 for the project.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
You can finish that.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Who is that? First.
Model.
Alderman. All right. And Alderman Berquist, second. All right. Now, any questions?
Yep. I just wanted to speak to, because it doesn't come up on a regular basis, the ability of the city to select the second bidder, not select the lowest bidder. So, the statutes say that the city is to select the lowest responsible bidder. That's the language in the statutes. The case law is very clear that there is no right just because you're the low bidder to the contract. There's no, like, the city does not have to grant that contract. It's a discretionary decision, and because it's a discretionary decision, the city is, has pretty broad immunity under the statutes to make this, you know, make this selection. Obviously, there's a, you know, there's situations where it's not permitted if it's, you know, discrimination or whatever, but the city has broad authority to make what, what they decide is in the best interest, the decision they decide is in the best interest of the city. So, there is no issue passing over forward contractors just because they are the lowest of, lowest bidders, so.
Okay. We have a motion. Are there any questions for Max? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn by call of chair.
The Finance Committee is now called to order. We have one presentation and four agenda items. First presentation, which is the 2022 Audit Presentation.
Hello. Thank you for your time this evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Andrea Jansen, and I'm with Baker Tilly. I'm the partner in charge of the city's audit. Before we get into the 2022 financial highlights that are on the screen, just wanted to make a couple of comments on the formal audit reports themselves. The first one being this annual financial, annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as the ACFR. This is your financial statement document. On Roman numeral page 10 of this document is the audit opinion. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion, also referred to as a clean opinion again this year, which is the highest level of assurance that we're able to give. There is an emphasis of matter paragraph this year related to implementation of a new accounting standard, GASB 87, related to lease accounting. So, if you were to look at this year's financial statements compared to last year's financial statements, there's probably about four additional pages of disclosures related to leases, some new terminology, and some changes in accounting, so. The other formal audit report that we issue is the reporting and insights from the 2022 audit. This is largely made up of required communications. If you've never read through that report before, I would encourage you to read through it. There's some information in there about, you know, our audit scoping process, things that we're looking at, the concept of materiality. On page six of that report, it talks about internal control matters. The only point that we had to disclose for internal control matters this year was a material weakness over financial reporting, which is consistent with last year. It's because we prepare the financial statements on behalf of the city. There were no material journal entries identified during the audit process, which is not something that is super common in municipalities of your size. So, you know, that is a reflection of the controls that are in place, certainly a reflection of, of the competency of your finance staff and their preparation for the audit. So, thank you to Carrie and staff. They really do an excellent job in preparing for us, which makes our job easier. And then the couple other items to mention in this report, your audit team is listed in here, pages 20 and 21, and if you do have matters that come up during the year that you think we should be aware of, you're welcome to reach out to any of us at any time. We welcome that information, and the last section of the report is the two-way communication, and that gives you some ideas of the things that we would want to know about, and that is really forward-looking to the 2023 audit. Moving into the numbers here. If I can get my scroll to work. All right. So, the first section in this handout is talking about your general fund, so that's your primary operating fund of the city, and here we're taking a look at fund balance or equity of that fund, and as a reminder, in sort of high-level terms, that's your assets minus your liabilities. It's, it's what you're left with for your reserves. As you can see, this is compared 2022 to 2021, and the blue line is an increase from last year of your total fund balance, and we'll start actually at the bottom of this chart with your non-spendable fund balance. That's really a category that's just as it sounds. It's made up of things that you can't use to purchase other items. The largest balance of that 1.3 million made up of inventories and prepaid items. Your restricted balance is of just under 217,000, really similar to last year. Assigned fund balances, again, similar to last year. That's largely made up of carryovers. If you decided as a council that you wanted to, to change the, the use of that items, those items, those carryovers, you would have an ability to change your mind on those. And then the largest portion of your fund balance is just over $9 million, and that's unassigned fund balance, not earmarked for any specific purposes. And below the chart, we've got a highly summarized income statement for the general fund, sort of how you got to that increased fund balance, revenues and other financing sources compared to expenditures and other financing uses. Starting in the middle column is your final budget. You had budgeted for breaking even or a balanced budget, and then your actual results on the left, 856,000 increase to net position or fund balance. The details of this, if you wanted to look in the financial statements, there's a summary on page 69, and the details are on page 77. The revenues, I think the biggest increase was related to your EMS charges for service, and there were many categories where you had savings on the expenditure side. So, the next page in this report, still focused on the general fund, still focused on fund balance. Here we are looking at a trend of your unassigned fund balance compared to your policy. So, you can see that red tread line in the middle increasing in terms of really dollars and percent. Your unassigned general fund balance is at 32.5% of your subsequent year budgeted expenditures, well within your policy range. I mean, you can see the black line at the top and the blue line at the bottom, and really in line with some of those median reference values that are in blue. So, really strong metrics here, good trends. Switching gears here, we are going to look at general obligation debt. So, this chart is showing your actual general obligation debt in the red line compared to your statutory, state statutory debt limit in the black line, and that, as a reminder, is 5% of your equalized value, and then your policy line is, is in the blue. So, your actual general obligation debt at the end of the year was about 48.3 million, a decrease from last year, and then you can see that your margins to those limits are increasing, which is also good news. Below the chart, we have a breakout of the different types of debt outstanding. Most of your debt, most of your general obligation debt relates to the city as opposed to the utility. That middle column, revenue debt, that would typically be utility debt, but you do not have any in that category. And then the leases and finance purchases are other types of financing, about 1.3 million at the end of the year. And if you're into data and comparative metrics, that link there will take you to the Wisconsin Policy Forum, and there's lots of fund data out there that you can play around with. So, moving along, still talking about debt here, but this chart focuses on how much you're spending on debt, so principal and interest of the governmental funds compared to non-capital expenditures. We use non-capital expenditures because they're typically more stable, so you get a stable ratio and comparison. Again, here, good news, good trends. Your, the red line is your actual ratio, and the blue line is your policy maximum. So, really, at the end of 2022, moving really in, in line with that policy at 20.3%, or I should say, just over the policy. But down from last year, below the chart, we've got just some information, more details related to that calculation, so actual principal and interest about 7.5 million for 2022. And then moving over to the utility results. At the top of the chart, and I guess as a reminder, utility rates are governed by the PSC of Wisconsin, so you can see your authorized rate of return, 4.9%. Actual rate of return is actually higher than that due to really, really actually low operating expenses in the current year. As you can see in the chart, this year's operating expenses of about 3.4 million was the lowest of the last five years, but good margins there. Your revenues increased slightly to 5.4 million in the current year, and again, operating expenses came in lower than usual. This next section is looking at unrestricted cash reserves. So, at the end of the year, you had a little over $6.8 million in unrestricted cash reserves related to the water utility. That is 15.22 months on hand, so if you were not to collect any revenues from your utility customers, you would be able to operate for more than, more than a year, which we're not suggesting you don't collect from those customers, but that is a healthy cash reserve. And then the last ratio on the bottom is your investment in capital. Utility funds do have a lot of capital, and so of those assets, 90% owned, 10% financed by debt at the end of the year. Moving into the sewer utility results, same type of information displayed on this page. Operating results, I would say, not as favorable for this utility, really a break even for the year in terms of operations, right around 4.5 million for both operating revenues and operating expenditures. So, that is something to keep an eye on, something to definitely consider if you need to look at, at rates for that utility. Again, unrestricted cash reserves, 7.7 million here, very, very healthy balance, and then the investment in capital, while that chart, the ratio of the chart is a little bit off, the, the numbers in there are accurate, so 99% equity funded, 1% related to debt at the end of the year. So, as we saw before, you know, you would have room to borrow should you need to borrow for capital projects. You have healthy cash reserves in both of those utilities, and, you know, just keep an eye on those, on those sewer rates and, and operations. And that is all that I had for planned comments. Happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
I did have one question, but it probably would be for Jay. The policy limits, the maximum general obligation debt, the maximum debt service, that was set by the council some years ago. What was the foundation for the, for the rationale for where they were set? Do you happen to know or remember?
Yeah, and Carrie can jump in too if, if I struggle with them, or at least specific ones. I know the, Jen, if you're asking about all of them, the, the fund balance, for example, that's the one I have up on my screen first. We have 17% and then 30% is, is kind of an industry standard as far as minimum at 17 and 30%, if you can make that for a goal. I think the council's opinion at the time, as we were approaching that 30%, was let's try to do even better than that. So, let's raise that bar 10% above the median reference, median municipalities, and so that's how we ended up with that black bar on the chart that shows up at, you know, in the mid 40 or low 40s. So, we're, we're significantly below that, but we're still in a very healthy position as Andrea shared. And then we move the bar on a couple of other ones as well. Let me just scroll to the proper. Yeah, this debt management policy one, the general obligation, I'll just read it, general obligation debt service should be no higher than 20% of the non-capital expenditures beginning in 2019. Total general obligation debt should be 10%, 10% below the median. So, this one just got changed in 2019, or in 2018 for 2019, again, trying to, to be more restrictive or, or better financially than, than our peers, and then you can see where we're at. The annual percentage debt limit in, at the end of '22 was 24%. We're way, way below capacity. And then the last one, if you read Carrie's management letter, it, it shared that we were out, out of compliance in the debt service, debt service to non-capital expenditures, and we're out by like a hair. And Andrea mentioned it too, but that 20.3%, the reference check is right at it. So, we've been, this one, we've been struggling, not struggling, but we've been working towards getting down to the measure, and, and we, we made it, I, I would claim we made it in 2022. Technically, we're just a, a hair over it for 2022. So, that's how they, that's how they came about. It was the council at the time trying to be more conservative and just put in a It was the council at the time trying to be more conservative and just put in additional checks and balances, if you will, on, on future discussions regarding finances and debt.
And I saw that reference too, and I thought, wow, are they strict.
If I could just jump in, it seems, it seems like just having, having been on the council at the time too, a lot of that had to do with bringing the, the city's overall debt down. Did that play into that at all?
Yeah, I would say that's a consistent, has been a consistent goal of previous councils as well.
Any other questions?
Was the suggestion that we raise the sewer rate?
Yep, the sewer utility rate, that, those operations are, you know, not trending as nicely as the water utility and maybe something's in the works.
So water utility is kind of okay rate wise, but sewer needs to come out okay?
Ruth is here, if you want to hear the, the latest on where we're at with our rate studies and what we might be pending.
Yeah, that's okay, Ruth.
Currently, we do, we just started rate studies for both of the utilities. As you all know, there's projects coming down the line for both utilities that are quite large. And knowing what happened with the audit and how close the sewer utility is, we're looking at rate studies for both of them. They just started. They take about six months to complete. Sewers rates, we would be able to implement right away. The water rates would then need to go before the Public Service Commission, which could take another nine months to implement them. Seeing that the water utility is in the condition it is, we're not as concerned with those. So it's a good thing if the sewer will need to raise their rates, we'll be able to implement them hopefully within the next year. So that's where we stand with those.
Awesome. Thanks, Ruth.
You're welcome.
Ruth, while you're, while you're there, I, since you're there, I was, so our rate of return is higher than the authorized rate of return. That's okay?
That's okay. We're not in violation of anything. That's our authorized rate of return. It does go up and down throughout the year as well. So we're just fine with that. There's no concern there.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Ruth or, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else for me? We're good? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
And thank you, Carrie, as well. Thanks. Okay, now to our agenda items. Give me just a moment. We have a resolution accepting a donation from King Riffle.
Good evening. On May 18th, we held our second annual retiree breakfast, where we have, one of our strategic goals is recruitment, retention, retirement, and that we've made a concerted effort to bring our retirees back to their home, make sure they know they're still part of our, our department and thank them for all the groundwork they laid to let us have a successful mission of protecting and serving the community. This year, King Riffle, who was a, many of you remember that name, was an alderman as well, but was a lieutenant, retired lieutenant with us, worked at the police department from 1968 to 1996. Great service. King was adamant that he wanted his, to donate to the department so that his service here was remembered. So for that breakfast, he donated a police flag, a standard and a pole with a plaque that says donated by Lieutenant King Riffle. That price was $487 and we helped facilitate that by paying for it, invoicing him. He presented us with a check. Check was deposited into the crime prevention donation account. We'd like that to be re-appropriated so we can use it to pay for the invoice and thank King Riffle greatly for, and all the retirees for their support of the department and all the work.
Motion to approve. I couldn't hear who made them. Oh, okay. Thank you, John.
One, two.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It passed, resolution passes. Thank you, chief. We have a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the downtown Riverwalk West. Is, okay.
Yeah, this is a small amount of money, but it's, it's something when the auditors just leave that we need to do properly. So it, it's 180 bucks that was an overpayment for a permit that, that we had applied for through the Riverwalk project. And we got a check back unbeknownst. Took us a while to find the rightful part of where that money goes and we're, we're pretty confident that it should be in the Riverwalk. Please earmark this 180 bucks for a $10 million Riverwalk project.
I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Someone beat you to it, Alderman Allen. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have a, oh, award Q23-04 design contract for 2023 road construction projects. Do we need to take these separately? No, that's true. Hello, Max.
Hello, thank you. So this first item is to award a quote 2304 to design a contract, to, to design three roads for reconstruction, Buttonless Street from Main Street to Ada Lane, Maple Wine Road to, from Ada Lane to Sylvan Way, and Hawthorne Drive from Seventh Avenue to Fifth Avenue. So we followed the city's purchasing policy and published a request for proposals to ask consultants who would like to design this project and also provide inspection services during the construction. And we received three proposals. We had given some flexibility to the candidates to bid on only one or all of the projects, depending on their resources available. And so we first ranked the, the firms based on their presentation of their firm, their resources, the project teams that they would assign to each of the project. And then after the ranking, we opened the envelopes that had their cost proposal as well. And in reviewing those, we came up with the recommendation to award this contract to Kapoor for all three projects in the amount not to exceed the values that were listed in their proposals and which are listed in the memo for, for this item. Any questions?
What was there, was there an issue with the low bidder?
So during the, during the review, we, we look at the corporate profile, the project understanding, the experience of the firm on similar project, the project team. And then if they have some references, if it's a company that we don't know really well, we can check references. And also, we asked them for a schedule of putting the project together, bidding the project and what they anticipate construction will be. So on this list, Rookit Milky had a lower cost, but during the review process, on their team, they only had one inspector. And we were going to have three projects that might go at the same time. And so we would need three inspectors because especially for underground utilities, you need somebody to watch when things are getting buried that you won't see again, to make sure it's done right. So the one inspector would not be able to cover all three jobs. And Kapoor had a team of three inspectors, Conkle Engineering bid only on two of the projects, and they had two inspectors, one for each project. So that was one of the decision factors. And then on the project team also, we look at the experience that they would have on the design part, but also on the inspection part. And so all these items put together lead to a score and that's why we picked Kapoor for this project.
Okay, understood. Yes, John?
Max, yeah, I understand you said, Conkle was able to have two inspectors with their contract?
Yes, they, they bid on two, two of the streets. Yes.
Is it possible, I mean, there's still a pretty good chunk of change between Conkle and Kapoor. Is it possible to do it with two?
We, we don't know because, well, they, they only bid with, on two, two streets. We do want to rebuild all three. So if we would award to Conkle, we would be doing two streets and we would not be doing the third street. So we would still have to pick one of the other two consultants to do that third street, which is Buttonless Street.
Okay, thank you.
So we would have to pay Conkle for those two streets and then pay somebody else for the third street on top of that.
All right, all right.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Well, I just have to say, Jed, that I do get comments more, more than once, that I think there's parts of the constituency that's glad that we don't just take the, jump on the lowest bidder. And we actually are taking things other than price into consideration. I really do think that, I appreciate that, Max.
Thank you. Yes, we make an effort to make sure we do, we get a, you know, good quality product in the end as well and things running smoothly. So yes, we take all that into account.
Thanks, Justice. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And finally, we have award Q2305 design contract for 2023 road construction projects. Max?
Thank you again. So this recommendation to award is for a quote to do the design and construction inspection services for the expansion of sand drive between Eastside Avenue and rural road. This is a road with a rural cross section which we want to improve to get urban cross section with curb and gutter and storm sewer. And so the same thing, we, we followed the city purchasing policy, put out an RFP. We received four proposals, which are listed in the memo. We ranked those firms through the same process. And then we opened their, their cost, cost proposals. And based on our analysis, we recommend to award this contract to Kapoor again for the design and inspection services for sand drive expansion.
I'm going to make the motion on this one since it's my street. I'll hear, I'll take a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I looked up in Roberts and the chairman can do, can make motions. So we just usually don't. Go ahead, Justice.
Have we worked with Kapoor before?
We have worked with them. They did a lot of developments in the early 2000s, mid 2000s, a lot of subdivisions. And I, I believe they have done a couple designs as well for, for the city on road construction projects in the past.
Thanks. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. No further business for the Finance Committee, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
We'll reconvene our common council meeting and we'll take up our consent agenda, items three through 17. Is there a motion? Thank you, Model and Sparts. Any comments, questions, discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next agenda items for consideration is a resolution in support of Washington County sharing 20% of the sales tax revenues annually and equitably with municipalities. Is there a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Burquist and Sternink. I'm going to turn this one over to Jay to kind of give us some background on, on some history on this, kind of where we've been and where we're at.
Sure. I'll just share the, maybe the process since April that has gone on and if it's cool with the council to maybe even back up a bit since, or prior to April. In 2017, Mayor Sedanico and this, this resolution references that action, did have meetings with all chief elected officials at the time and encouraged local municipalities, towns, cities and villages to adopt a resolution, maybe similar to the one before you tonight, asking for 20%, asking for sharing of the county sales tax at that time, 2017. And 15 of the municipalities, towns, cities and villages, 15 of the 19 municipalities, interestingly, interestingly, the same number that acted on advisory referendums this, this past April. But 15 of them did come through with resolutions and submit those to the county requesting that they share sales tax with towns, cities and villages in an equitable format. This action was, was on the heels of Sheboygan County on their own, acting to enact sales tax and share sales tax dollars with their municipalities for road construction. So Mayor Sedanico was following that process and encouraged the municipalities to move forward at the time. And then shortly before the mayor resigned in, in 2019, he did convene another group and made another run at this to, to encourage the county to share county sales tax money. And nothing happened. It wasn't as formal of a process as, as this. It wasn't, he hosted another meeting and encouraged folks to be positive with the county as far as asking for the, for the sharing of the sales tax. Fast forward to last fall, 2022, Mike Miller's Legislative Group, which many of you have been active in over the years, or at least are aware of, but Mike's led as the Executive Director, former mayor here, the Mid-Merin Municipal Group, a two-county elected leader group, and has a legislative committee. That legislative committee took up this topic and they encouraged a conversation with the county. And Mike convened a meeting with a couple of town officials, a couple of village officials and a couple of city officials and asked the county executive to work towards sharing of the sales tax in October of 2022. That's when that meeting happened. And it was Mike's opinion that that wasn't going to be something that the county was going to move forward during that meeting. I was present at the meeting during that meeting. There was conversation about sharing and doing some, some things collaboratively, but, but not a real willingness to share county sales tax. Then the fall and spring months occurred with Mike Miller's group again encouraging municipalities to put this for the, before the voters. And you guys had a chance to act on this prior to April. And it, it certainly passed in, in the city of West Bend. It passed by the highest majority in Hartford, the city of Hartford passed 83% and overall 32,000. So all these numbers are included in your, in your resolution before you today. Since the passage of the 76.76 countywide advisory referendums, Mike's again begun to meet with a small group of, of his local elected leaders and have begun to formulate a process on how to approach the county executive. I know Mike recently has approached Josh again. One of the ideas that they came up with was for the mayor, village presidents or town chairman of their respective municipalities to send a letter to the county board representative that represents their municipality. In our case, that's five. We have five county board representatives for the city of West Bend. Mayor Ongart did pen a letter and, and sent it off to the county board supervisors. And I believe that most, if not all, of the other town, cities and village chairman did that as well. This is another step in that process. I know that this is really important to the city of West Bend. We have a lot of road need. I'm not telling any of you anything that you don't know, but we, we do have a lot of road need in West Bend. We do hear from our constituents on a regular basis, I'm sure you all do too, that our roads have some work to do and we recognize that. We did partner with the county on a study that accomplished some priority ranking that, that Max and his team are able to use. And more importantly, it shined a bright shining light on the fact that we don't spend enough money on roads in order to keep up to where we enough money on roads in order to keep up to where we should be. And that report suggested we should be spending $12 million a year. This isn't $12 million, but it's a significant step in the right direction. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I felt it important to put this topic on our agenda tonight with this resolution, kind of as a formal way to recognize that, that this was on our ballot. This board, this, this council put it on the ballot, like Jay said, late last year, before April, obviously. And this is kind of our formal recognition of, you know, 73.91% of the voters, 7,451 voters in our city voted in favor of this. Just to add a little bit to Jay's comments, I have been in contact with the county executive. He convened a meeting of village presidents and town board presidents and city mayors. We have another meeting scheduled for, I believe it's June 28th. He talks about a, a path to shared revenue. He describes it as, he believes there is a path. It's a very narrow path is what he describes it as, but he believes there is a path, which is encouraging. As mayor, I feel my need to try to work together with him and all the other mayors and presidents to try to find out what that path is. And so I will, I've been working hard on this the past month or so. The Mid-Merine Group has worked very hard on it and so have people like Scott Stortz and Brian Heckendorf and Fuzz Martin and Mayor Maholak and others. And so just kind of wanted to add that little bit of detail that there, there are conversations happening. But again, this, I felt important to formally recognize the vote that our constituents took on this.
My chair, Mayor, you know, time is of the essence. The county operates under a biennial budget process and they are in the beginnings of working on a 2024, 2025 biennial budget. So if, if they don't hear from you all and our constituents now, this won't be included, this revenue sharing won't be included in the next biennial budget that the county adopts. So I guess I obviously encourage the passage of this resolution and more importantly, the continued conversation with our respective county board supervisors that represent the city of West Bend and others, if you know them, to incorporate, that's what this asked for, to incorporate the revenue sharing within the next budget, which is coming very, very soon.
Any questions? If not, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item for consideration is a resolution approving a certified survey map to dedicate and name a 50-foot wide right-of-way for South Main Street located at 2275 South Main. Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butch Look, and we'll give that one to Alan. Jim, take it away.
Thank you. Is this a resolution that we're asking the council to act on? A certified survey map was done back in 2001 to redivide the property up there. As part of this, we got the half right-of-way for Main Street. This would also be used for the reconstruction eventually when we do Main Street. So we're just asking the council to approve that resolution for that.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is an approval of a developer's agreement for Lynch Menchers LLC located at 2275 South Main Street. I'll take a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Sternig, and second by Dolnick. Go ahead, Jim.
So this developer's agreement, is this the agreement to set some parameters in regards to the dedication of that right-of-way along with some access and then stormwater management that we have for the development?
Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend, Wisconsin for a change in the recommended land use from commercial to industrial. And the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend for approximately 5.2 acres of land located north of Wingate Street and west of North Trenton Road. I'll take a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Butch Look and Sparts. Jim?
Thank you. So this is just a comprehensive plan amendment. We're acknowledging a change in the land use up in that area. Originally, we had it for commercial. Most of the industrial park is built out, so the commercial pattern has been set for that. This 5.2 acres is to be converted over to the industrial for the future development of the remaining of that industrial land. So the next item also is just the rezoning for that, which would actually take it from the B1 commercial to the M2 industrial. So this is to help facilitate the final development area of that industrial park.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion? Go ahead.
The retail portion in front is all okay with this and everything? It won't affect their operations?
Yeah, no, the, the way the development pattern is set up for that is that everything that fronts that frontage road and along Washington Street there is pretty much developed. In fact, they have one last user for the other commercial next to that dental clinic. So the lands to the south of that are pretty much landlocked, so the best use would be to combine it with the adjacent properties to the south.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next is the ordinance to rezone approximately 5.2 acres of land located north of Wingate Street and west of North Trenton Road from B1 Commercial Business District to M2 Heavy Industrial District. I'll entertain a motion. Sparts?
Second.
And Burquist? Any comments, questions, discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Our reports tonight will start with our library board meeting held on May 16th, 2023. Mr. Burquist, is that you?
It is.
All right.
Thank you very much, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on May 16th. The call to order occurred at 5:15 PM, followed by the pledge of allegiance. The board approved the consent agenda, which consisted of the minutes of the April 18th meeting and the library expenditures for April of 2023. The next item was the election of officers. Deb Bartnikowski was reelected to another term as president. Karen Wachholz was elected vice president. Joseph Leagate was reelected to another term as treasurer and Katie Mattson was elected as the secretary. Financial reports were then given by the treasurer. There was no activity to report except some interest gains on accounts and payment of the bonding insurance covering the treasurer that we approved the month before. The library director reported the roofing project continues with a split shifting approach to the project. The shingling portion is recently completed and the flat roof work is commencing soon. Like any project, there were some issues that have come to light during the work that will need to be addressed, but that's being worked. The drop box out front of the library is working out okay versus being in back of the building. A couple of staff members are being at, excuse me, being asked to attend the Wisconsin Library Association Conference this year being held in Middleton, Wisconsin, for the purpose of further research into staff structures. Lighting in Patrons Park was refurbished, switching the old-style lighting to newer, more efficient LED lights, saving money and keeping the neighbors in mind who have expressed some concerns over bright lighting in the park. Steve announced that there were a couple of promotions in the library, that a couple of circulation assistants were promoted to library associate two. Congratulations to Cindy and Dawn. The board president had nothing to report, but did ask that, asked if the library was ready for the farmer's market and music on Main, which is now being held in the area of the library this year. Steve said they were and was actually looking forward to the positive aspect of having more people in the area of the library. There was no agenda items for consideration. And finally, the last item was the assigned task review. We were asked to review the board's bylaws and to be prepared for discussion at the next meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for June 20th.
Thank you, Alderman and Burquist. Any questions? Thank you. Our next report is a Tourism Commission meeting held on May 16th, 2023. Alderman Sternig, is that you? No. Oh. Alderman Allen, are you on the Tourism Commission?
I, I am. I thought Alderman Sternig was going to do that one, so I didn't bring my notes for that one. We did meet. I don't have the date with me. We approved five, five, I believe, five grants. I'd asked, since I don't have my notes with me or, or handy, can I put that report off until the next council meeting?
That's no, no problem. No problem. I don't know, Alderman Sternig, if you have anything you want to add?
No, what I'll add is I thought Alderman Allen was handling that one.
No big deal. We'll come back to that one in a future meeting. You bet. Thank you. Parks and Rec Commission meeting held on May 25th, 2023.
It'd be me, yes. Yes, we had a, we had a great meeting. We did, we did hold it in the conference room instead of this room. I can't remember what was going on, but anyways, we had another commission election. We did take care of most of that in the last meeting, but Mike, Mike Starrell is outgoing. He had to step down and we absolutely thank him for his service in that, on that committee. Mike Weston is the person that's, that's taking his role as the chair under unfinished business. We did accept the funds coming from Washington County to support the 2023 lifeguard expenses. I think you're all familiar with that, if you have any questions you can ask. Under new business, we talked about things like the Mad Dog and Merrill Cooking Show coming to West Bend. That was last Thursday and I missed it. I did want to go to that and I forgot all about it. Anyways, I understand that went very well. We also had a proclamation of July being Park and Rec Recreation Month. A number of donations, I would take forever to go through them all, but we certainly thank those folks that, that made those generous donations to the Parks Department. And then we had various reports by the internal department heads. It's a great meeting.
Thank you. Discussion item tonight, we have introduction of Chapter 1 Municipal Code.
Wait, we have a, I have a report for the bid board.
Okay, yeah, sure, we'll take it. Alderman Allen.
That one I was prepared for. We met on D-Day, April, June 6th, 2023. We reviewed and approved the April meeting minutes. There was no meeting in May due to no, no business. We also approved the current financial report. We received an update on the Main Street reconstruction. There were a number of positive comments from board members regarding their experiences working with owner construction. So far, all have been very positive. There are weekly project updates on Wednesdays at 3:00 PM. There is on the city website, a number to call in for those. The board approved a summer contract for the weed maintenance of sidewalks and flowerbeds throughout the downtown outside of the project area. If, I provided an update on the activities of the marketing commission or committee and our efforts to promote the downtown businesses, directing customers downtown and looking them through signage with wet paint. We've begun the discussion of holiday decorations and efforts have been asked that vendors come forward and make presentations at a forthcoming meeting. Due to the Fourth of July holiday, the bid board will meet on Tuesday, July 11th, 10:00 AM, in the council chambers. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Allen. Appreciate that. Our discussion item tonight is introduction of Chapter 1 Municipal Code changes. And I'm going to turn this one over to Jay Chambault.
I'll start out and answer any questions that you might have and then defer to Ian as well, who's had a chance to review this document that's before you and could, could add additional commentary as well. This, this chapter is in, you can see by the blue and red that's included in the track change format before you, in need of significant attention. Several of you, over the last couple of years, have asked me about this. Some of you have asked me specifically about positions that are listed in here that aren't as they were in the past. And specifically, the Assistant City Administrator position is one that has been outdated for some time, a position that's been without, within the city's organizational structure. It's existed in our code, but we've not budgeted for it on an annual basis since 2016, 2016, when the incumbent Amy Reitman, who was the Assistant City Administrator at the time, left for the Town of Rome. And we, as a collective organization and this body chose to not fund the position in, in the future. This, this code change recreates that position, reestablishes the parameters as to how we're currently structured. And, and really, the other department changes that are along and proposed with this are ancillary to that, to that main change. At the time in 2016, our human services, human resources director was the slash Assistant City Administrator. That position also was very influential in the formation and presentation of the budget, the annual budget. So the first significant change in 1.05 denotes that is not the case at, at this time. I think it's worth noting that under Powers A, the departments that are being proposed to report to the Assistant City Administrator position are the same departments that were codified in the past, minus the finance department. That's a, a department, and Carrie, as you all know, as the department director and I work very closely together on the creation of the, on the annual budgets at this time. And this, a lot of this cleanup is involved with that. There's another significant change with, within this area 1.05, and that's B, the very next item. And I'll just read it. It states, be responsible for economic development activities to promote business development, business recruitment and retention and job, job creation in the city of West Bend. That's, that's a duty that was not a part of the previous Assistant City Administrator position and one that I feel strongly about including in, in this code change. Do think it's also important to point out item D, and some of you have directly asked me about this over my seven years with the city of West Bend. Who's in charge when you're not around? And that's not the easiest, has not been the easiest question to answer as we haven't had an Assistant City Administrator position. But this, this makes that clear and it simply states, in the absence of the city administrator, in the absence of the city administrator, serve as city administrator, serve as the city administrator. Sorry, it's blue and red. It's hard for my 7:30 PM eyes to read. In the absence of the city administrator, serve as the city administrator. So in the future, when asked that question, I would say the Assistant City Administrator is in charge when, when I'm not around. If there are specific questions, I'll attempt to answer them. Under city labor attorney, we made a correction there. Ian can speak to that. Deletion, if you will, as far as the assignment of the labor attorney. And then there's appointment under city attorney as well that Ian added. And then I'll just maybe skip ahead before you might ask any questions or before Ian jumps in. Some of the, some of the cleanup, well, before I do that, some of the cleanup within this first section under city officials, there, there was conflicting but not, but not wrong information that said as far as the majority of the full membership of council or reporting, living within 15 miles. And it might've said it six different ways. This cleanup attempts to say it one way. Jess Wilds went through it with a fine-tooth comb and, and proposed a bunch of the changes, spent a bunch of time reviewing it and inserting information as well. And then, as I mentioned, kicking it up to Ian for, for final review before it went out to you all for review this evening. In the, in the committee, commission and board section, I would say the same kind of thing. We tried to, to make consistency where it would, some would say, serve at the pleasure of the mayor and may be appointed. The process is, it should be the same. The process is, it should be the same throughout all of the, of the sections as far as how committee members, commission members, or board members are appointed. If you find anything between now and the 26th, when we bring this back to you for action, please don't hesitate to reach out. But that is the summary of changes before you tonight.
Dolnick?
Let me, I'm sorry. Let me go over a couple of things quick. Do you don't mind?
No. Okay. No, no, go ahead, Ian. I just had a question, but I couldn't wait.
Yep. So just wanted to make a few notes. This is presented to you in a, like, redline format. The plan before we bring it back is to finalize the cleanup so that it's actually numbered correctly, and we don't have all of the repealed, so it will be organized in a different number format than this, this. So it'll be like, subchapter one will be 1.101, subchapter two will be 1.201, so that we have consistent numbering down and we clean up the way it looks. We wanted to give you this format today, so you see what the changes are before we wipe out all the formatting and make it look nice. Regarding the city labor attorney, there's no true need to have that as part of the municipal code. We can hire outside council. We do that on a regular basis. There's no need for it to be a separate ordinance position under the city, you know, under the municipal code. The city attorney has that authority to hire outside council. It's good to have that flexibility because sometimes conflicts of interest arise with selected labor council. Sometimes we need to go a different direction due to retirements or just choice of new council. So taking it out of this just leaves it up in the air, just like any other outside council, where we would hire the attorney to handle the landfill or another lawsuit or specific issue. So there's no need to carve that out as a separate item. The rest of it, like Jay said, is just cleanup of language. There was one note, we will be creating the utility director position when we finalize it. That was previously under director, the Public Works, that hasn't been under Public Works for eight years, something like that, but had just never been added into the ordinances. So we'll add that in as formally as a utility director, similar to, you know, DBW or any of the other positions. And then I did some cleanup on the ethics, the criminal provisions for ethics, so. Didn't change anything, just made it more plain, I think.
Alderman Dolnick?
I was just, so what I noticed is, with just a few exceptions, all the positions refer to the duties of the job that are in the job description. That verbiage isn't in either the city administrator or the assistant city administrator sections, although there are job descriptions for, for both of those. So was there a reason, or is it just an oversight? Should, should that reference be added for those two? For consistency's sake?
Yeah, I'll go first. I certainly have no problem adding them, Ian, as far as whether it's a legal thing or not. I'm sure it's not, but you can opine on that.
I, I, for the city administrator, I feel like I'm less strong on that because the, the city administrator is such a broad position to begin with. I've always hated long, detailed job descriptions for the city administrator because I feel like just the broad description of they have to do, they have to manage the city, is much more applicable, and you box yourself in as much as you box an employee, and when you specify that at that high of a management level. Assistant city administrator, I don't think it's as big of a deal. I'll also note, city administrator is going to be a matter of contract as much as anything else for the job description. So assistant city administrator, I think it makes sense to add that language. City administrator, I don't see the need because of the contract aspect there.
Any other questions, discussion? This is just a discussion item tonight. We'll see this again in two weeks. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Allen.
Yes. Is there a reason that the city prosecuting attorney remains in as a, a section when you're dropping the labor attorney? It seems like the verbiage that allows the attorney to hire other attorneys for legal matters would cover that as well.
So we've just approached the city prosecuting attorney differently because that's a, well, I mean, it's, it goes back many years, but it, those are separate contracts. I don't believe there's a separate contract for the labor attorney. It's just we retain somebody, and that could change over time, and we do actually use different labor attorneys for different, different things. We use Von Briesen for most day-to-day labor matters. If there's some type of employee issue that come up, and we use, we use a different firm for negotiations, that very well could change over time. City prosecuting attorney, I, I think it makes sense because there's a separate firm who handles that under contract, and that contract is negotiated and approved by council. So I think it makes sense to have that. I don't think, I, I think it makes sense to kind of take that away from the city attorney position as, you know, the city attorney shall conduct all law business, but the matter of prosecuting attorney is a separate matter that's appointed by council.
It's been a bit since we had a contract come before you, but we do have two separate contracts, one for prosecuting attorney and one for regular city attorney. I agree with everything Ian just said.
Any more questions tonight?
Well, and I do want to clarify, when I say I have the authority, I do that in discussion with Jay, obviously. I'm not spending the city's money carte blanche just because I can. Thank you for that, Ian.
We'll see this again on June 26. Obviously, in the meantime, any questions, don't, don't hesitate to call Jay and get those questions answered.
And to clarify, this is, we don't have to deal with it often, but this is a first reading under the ordinances. So even if you adopt non-unanimously at the next meeting, it would be adopted at that meeting. So we specifically had this as the introduction of the code so that it's going to be acted upon regardless at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
This serves as our first reading.
Correct. This serves as our first reading. We will, it will not have to come back a third time.
The verbiage on the agenda is...
Yes. That's why it says introduction of Chapter One.
Okay.
It was introduced at this meeting. It will be acted upon at the next.
Got it.
Thank you for that. Any announcements for the good of the order of the council?
Yes.
Alderman Allen, I was waiting for you, but if...
I'm a normal one. Go downtown, eat, drink, and be merry.
Good. I've got a couple tonight on your table. You'll see that the city of West Bend submitted for and won membership into the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities, which I went onto the website, and there are not a lot of cities in Wisconsin who have this distinction. So this is quite an honor. There's going to be a reception on Wednesday at the Beach House, and all of you are invited to attend. We'll make sure that we post that in case we do have a quorum, but should be a neat little celebration, and, and I think it's going to rain tomorrow and not Wednesday, so we should be able to be outside for that one. Another announcement I have, Jay, I know doesn't like it when we talk about him, but I am going to talk about him a little bit tonight. It is Jay and Sandy's 30th wedding anniversary today, and so we want to wish them a happy wedding anniversary. But also, the Wisconsin City and County Managers Association, which we're a member of, recognizes leaders throughout the state, and Jay was nominated this year for the Meritorious Service Award and won the award. And so he will be recognized at Lambo Field at their annual conference and celebration and award ceremony later this month, and certainly very deserving of this award. Was thrilled that he was nominated and just extremely thrilled that he was won, and very, very happy for you, so congratulations. Try to beat that one. Do we get to go with you to that? Good question.
Jay, you are really red right now.
We do have an item appropriate for closed session tonight, and so I will read the closed session motion, and then I'll ask for, for the actual motion on this. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, namely a discussion of the Assistant City Administrator position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir, Colonel.
We'll give that to Model and Burquist. Any comments, questions, discussion? Do we have to do a roll call vote to go into close? That's what I thought. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen? Alderman Allen? Okay. Alderman Burquist?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Dingzai?
Aye.
And just so the public knows, we will adjourn our common council meeting from closed session tonight. We won't be reconvening for any more business, so we stand adjourned into closed session.